Pray for the city, Don.
City, okay.
We got some prospects, so pray for them.
Pray for that family that lost the young girl recently.
Mrs. Bennet.
I think it was another one.
Tabitha Bennet.
Another accident today, so who was involved in that?
Pray for those families.
For them too.
Thank you.
Might say it's an honor to come as part of the county mill station association and pray with your people. That's prayer. Father, we come before you tonight and, Father, we just remember that you promised Samuel that you're moved by prayers. And, Father, we just come to you just now, asking you to hear our prayers and move upon this prayer tonight. Father, we do marvel at your creation. You provide for us everything that we need each and every day. Every day is a new adventure and every day is different and, Father, that makes life interesting here on this earth. Father, just pray for this group as they meet tonight and help them to make good decisions and do what's right for this community. Father, we know they've left their homes and family and come here to be of service and just be with them as they meet tonight. Father, we know in our community there are many folks who, right now, live in darkness and despair. I just pray, Father, that you'll light them up through the power of your son, Jesus, and through the power of the Word, through the power of the Spirit, and, Father, may they find a brighter day in that way. Father, we just pray for many of our community who do service for this community each and every day. Father, we think of the schools and city council, utilities, police, fire, the churches of our community, those who work in utilities. Father, we just give their best for our young people and for our community each and every day. And, Father, we do pray for the graduates of our high schools in the county. Father, just be with them and give them wisdom and give them courage to step forward and do what's right for them and for our country. And, Father, we are so thankful for your son, Jesus, who came into this world to give us an opportunity of eternal life. But, Father, just as important, he has given us the opportunity to live abundantly here each and every day. And we just pray, Father, all these things in his name. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, if everybody would please turn your cell phone rangers off, please. We'll have roll call.
Councilman Bishop?
Present.
Councilwoman Noddy?
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Present.
Councilwoman Nutty?
Present.
Councilwoman Durn?
Present.
Councilman Frank?
Present.
Okay, it shows all that we can do business. And so, as we'll go on to number two, the reading of the minutes. Is there any additions or corrections of the minutes presented on the May 2nd meeting?
Okay, accept the minutes as read.
Okay, we have a motion to second to accept the minutes of May 2nd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, Carol, should you go speak on the Spillman?
Spillman is our system. I think for those of you who were here last year, this was actually approved last year. And then there was some comparison shopping that went on and we're back to Spillman. Basically, we need to upgrade and our system won't be supported at the end of the year. We're going from version 4.6 to 6.3 and it costs $12,258.15 to the city.
If we go to this, does the county have to go there in turn?
The county is going there. Now, they're actually, I don't know if it's more of an upgrade or they're getting a... They're changing the system quite a bit more than we are. Our upgrade doesn't require training on our part. The county has to get quite several weeks of training, I think.
Do we have to do, do we need to be the same version as the county?
That's a good question. I'm not sure about that. I think Jackie was actually here in dispatch and she knows more about it than I do.
She's a local coordinator, isn't she?
She must be busy or she...
There she goes.
There she is.
They all use the same...
Jackie, you have to come up here, Jackie. Get up here, let me see you on camera.
She's shook her head. She tried to stay.
Required it.
The CPU that we use is all city and county use it both. Their upgrade is more expensive because Spillman has revamped their booking software. So theirs, they have like three weeks' training that they have to go through for their new booking.
And they got a bunch of offices that use it where we just have...
Yeah.
So it will be the same version then, or do...
Yeah, when they do the upgrade, our CPU is back here and they tie in through the internet. And then, so if our internet goes down, they can't connect in Spillman. So we all, the 6.3 or whatever it is they're going to, it's everybody's. It'll be all everybody's because it's a hardware one main system. And then VIA will come down and transfer all of our data into the new upgrade.
So this one time fee until another upgrade's needed?
Well, the biggest expense of it is, more than anything, is the hardware. We are currently using a Sun server and it will bump up to a Linux, which is more Windows-based. It's actually like 99% Windows-based. And once we get that, the memory on it, if we're ever able to go mobile to the cars, it's all server-ready. All we have to do is, like, some of the guys have the computers in their cars now and they'll connect with, a lot of the guys have hotspots on their phone so that they can connect to Spillman and then they can do their accident reports while they're sitting in the road. They can pull up out back and connect to the internet here and transfer it all, update it and stuff. So if we're ever able to get computers for everybody and go mobile, it'll be ready.
This is an annual thing, isn't it, Carol?
This, we have an annual...
Contractual agreement.
Contractual agreement with them. This is completely separate. This is just the upgrade.
Upgrade, okay.
The annual maintenance is due in, we pay it in January of every year.
And how much does that have?
Is that the $6.48? Is that what that is here? I'm looking for a quote.
Eight thousand dollars.
It's quote, eight thousand?
Yeah, the cost of the upgrade, the $12,000 is the equipment, the upgrade, everything. When Spillman first did their upgrade, they were promoting an IBM computer that was going to cost us about $30,000. And VIA was able to get equipment that was high quality and just as good at much less price. So Spillman started sending people to VIA, letting them go through VIA to get the cheaper equipment because with the $30,000 piece of equipment, nobody could afford it.
So the annual maintenance is at the...
No, the annual maintenance is like $20,000 a year.
Is it that much?
It may not be that much, but it's, it's, I'm wanting to think, twelve to eighteen, something like that. There's, it's not as, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's, it's about eighteen, yeah. And that's, they, if there's any patches, they call them patches, for the software, that, they do that. They'll do anything. If we call them on anything, they will come, and then they can handle, they can log into our computer system if we're having any issues, anything like that. And they're great, they come down, they've come down two or four times a year, come out from Utah to visit with us, see if there's anything we need, any problems we're having. And if they're not here, they'll call us on the phone.
Carol, you said training's not needed, but looking at this quote, they do offer it as part of the initial cost?
For the county, they are, because like I said, with our, part of our upgrade, it's going to be, you know, it'll be the, like, the names table will be updated where it has a cellphone section. And we're also going to be able to tie in, like, Rush County, Henry County, and I believe most of the counties around us, we will be able to have the ability to connect into their system to see, you know, we're dealing with Joe Doe here that's been in trouble in Henry County. Instead of having to call them and tie them up, we can connect into their system, see what they've had, if they have a current address, and they can, they'll be able to do the same with us. They can't modify, they can't do anything, all they can do is look, but it gives them the ability to get up, current update, everything, they can see what they've done in other counties as well.
With all of that, there's no training or refresher needed?
No, they came down, Harry Cobre was here, Lattifer last year, and he went over a bunch of the upgrades and everything with us.
I know just enough about Spillman to be dangerous, but isn't this the system that's used by both police stations, or actually all three police entities in the state and the county, and the court system, the clerks, and prosecutor's office?
The prosecutor's office has the ability to log in. We've given them logins, so that way, if they need a report and they can get, they can print them out over there. They can't modify in our system, but they can see everything we've got. And I do think they have the ability to modify names because of them dealing with them as much as we do. They can keep our names table updated as much as we do. Probation has the same abilities. They can log into our system and get, you know, they're dealing with them, they have to check in like once a month so they can update them as well.
Okay, is there any more questions?
We're just looking to advertise for a...
Yes, so I need a motion to advertise for 12,000, was it 12,000?
Mr. Mayor, I move to advertise for $12,258.15 for the Spillman upgrade and take that money from the riverboat.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to take the money from the riverboat. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll advertise it.
Thank you.
Okay, Carol, you're up again.
This one's going to take by law.
Okay.
I got Whiz Bank Computer Skills too.
The cops grant, yes, has become available. The cops grant has, she just blew it.
I know, I know.
The cops grant has come available again. I know that we had the issue last year of no contract. We still do not have a contract, but they think one will be approved in the very near future. So they're very hopeful. Right, Chad? So to move forward, the grant is for three years. The fourth year, we are required to keep the officer at 100%. I laid a spreadsheet out in front of everyone. So we can take the $41,667, it's a 75-25 split with a maximum of $125,000 over the three-year period. So it looks like year one, the officer would cost us approximately $39,000. Year two, about $51,500. Year three, $54,000. And this includes all benefits and every worst-case scenario that we could come up with. You know, provided that an officer had a master's degree and was certified in every certification that he could get. Year four would be about $107,000.
This has all fringe and everything?
Everything, everything, yes. So, like I said, the first three years, it's a 75-25 split. What's in the yellow is what the grant will cover. What's in the white on your spreadsheets is not covered under the, what they consider fringe benefits. They, the grant won't pay for any overtime. And did I mention that our levels, if we start out at 25, we hire one officer. Throughout the entire four-year period, we have to stay at the 25 plus the hired officer. We can't let those numbers drop.
So it's actually increased then, right?
The grant is, the purpose of the grant is to increase. You know, it's a little different than the firefighter grant, the firefighter, you know, it's just the way it is. They, theirs was at no cost to the city, but this one, the officers are. The grant is due the week of June the 20th. It's a two-step process, so I really need permission to move forward with this tonight if that's what you wish to do.
This is June 20th?
Mm-hmm.
Anything you want to say, Carol?
I guess it's a good opportunity for the city, 75%. What is the percentage for the first year?
Entire.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Yes, for the first three years, I think, seventy-five, twenty-five. With the maximum each year being up to $41,000.
May I ask a question? On this piece of paper here, I see at the very bottom on equipment, we've only allocated $7,300 for the first year and none for two, three, and four, years two, three, and four.
They got the vest.
Radio.
Vest is at least five years, guns or, I don't know how long it takes us to get them replaced. And then the radio should last at least four years.
So you're betting on a one-time buy then, right? Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any guesstimate when you might be having, like, the next person retire?
I know we have one who has signed a drop for 2019. Do you have anybody else?
Nobody else has signed up. He signs up and starts July of this year, so he has three years of the drop, so he has to leave at the end of three years, which will be July of three years from now. And we have, we have multiple officers that have forty or...
Yeah, we have multiple officers.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but that really doesn't matter in this situation, does it?
No.
Because the numbers can't go down, so that doesn't...
Yeah, we have to maintain the level.
An extended level, right?
So we still have to replace someone who...
Right, that's what I was meaning, we're still... Uh-huh, right.
Is there any more questions for Carol or Diana? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the cops grant.
Let me say something first. In life, I'm a pretty optimistic person. When it comes to the finances, I'm pretty pessimistic. And seeing that we're in a financial emergency, I don't know that we could, in good conscience, extend staffing levels as much as I'd like to. I don't know we'll be able to afford to in four years. So an additional $107,000 to increase staffing levels, which I think is a great thing. I don't know that we could afford it. So I really think we need to think about that before we make any kind of decision.
I concur.
So do I.
I just don't see the room in the budget for it. And I don't see it getting any better. You see the press rolls? On the property tax side, going up or down?
I'm sorry?
On the county, on the property tax side, going up or down?
The county will go down. The county will go down because the agricultural will get tax breaks.
Historically, it's gone down. If it goes down, we're in trouble.
Okay, so...
On personal days, you don't show anything. It's one day plus seven days, but you don't show any total...
They don't get extra, they, those aren't a buyout. Like, there are sick days after four years is up, they can, when they leave, and that was, um, year four, worst-case scenario, if they did leave after year four, we can, we would have to buy out their 48.
Forty-eight days, but so the personal days just doesn't apply? Is that why you don't...
Correct, correct. They don't get extra pay for that. Same way with the vacation days. We, they don't, you know, that's just built into the base salary. They don't get extra days for those. We don't buy those out and, as well as sick days, well, until the fourth year, until you leave. So, you know, the buyout on sick days is, like I said, worst-case scenario, is what we did with that, just to...
I appreciate the work you do, I really do. I just don't, I don't see it there.
Well, then I'll ask again if there's a motion to apply for the cops grant or not.
This is like the other grant. If you apply and don't take it, you're in trouble, right?
Yeah, any grant, I would rather not apply and not get it than apply and get it and not take it because that blackballs us, you know, and we're dealing with the federal government, so...
The last thing I want to do is get a situation where you can't afford to pay the guy.
Exactly.
And I think that's where we're headed with this, because you look at year four, $107,000.
And like I said, that's the absolute worst-case scenario on that $107,000. That was the maximum of everything.
Even an extra $40,000.
Because I felt like, you know, we owed it to you to give you...
I appreciate it.
I would rather have the worst-case scenario and come out way better than say, oh, it's only going to cost 50 and be $150.
This is a good report, it is, Diane, it's very thorough. Thank you.
Is this something that comes out every...
It comes out every year. It is, you know, we looked at it last year and opted not to do it last year, so...
Okay, I'll ask again for a motion. If not, it'll die, it'll die because of a lack of a motion. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay, we have a Resolution 2016-10. I'll let Rosemary, this is the, this is the money we got for, from the state for our road, for our road funding, so...
This is just a resolution enabling us to create a fund, a separate fund, so we can keep track of the special distribution that the, we receive from the state. 75% of it has to be used for the local road and streets and 25% of it can be used as needed. And so we'll be able to keep track of it being in a separate fund. It's just requirements, just to have a resolution to create the fund, is all this.
We received $338,005.47?
I didn't look at the pennies, but...
Say that number again.
$338,005.47, and I believe it was 47 cents. But you can only spend that money for roads and streets. And like I said, it's 75, you can spend it all and you can use it towards your match money for roads, which is coming out pretty, that's one reason we've done the Pacer grant, to set us up for that, so we could use it. But 25% can be used to buy equipment, but 75% has to be used for the roads.
25% can be used for anything?
Yeah.
Right, but you also want to be careful on where you want to spend it because if there's a grant, there will be grants opening up that will get funding, $1 per one, match, 100% match. So if we still have the $338,000 and we get that grant, we can get $338,000 in matching.
Right.
So that's why, and it is to where, if you don't have a program in place to look at the state of your streets, you will not get any kind of federal funding in the future. So that's why Mayor got the Pacer program going so soon.
They're supposed to be in town, I think, on the 25th, 26th, 27th to start it. I believe that's when they're going to start.
Now, when we, when we set this money aside, do you have to come back to the city council then to allocate that money each time? Or will it be placed in a separate account?
It's in, it'll be in a separate fund.
So it'll be like a discretionary account then that can just be spent whenever, or does it have to be appropriated through the council?
I did not check and see about the appropriation, but it will, if we, with it being in the separate...
I think it has to be specified what you're spending it on.
Well, 75% is roads and streets.
I know that, but specifically what roads and streets and what have you.
But we're going to use it mostly as match money, is what we'd like to use it for, because you can get more done.
And when this money is exhausted, is this, is this special fund then...
Gone.
Cease?
It's a one-time, one-time giving, so...
No time restraint?
No, no, no time restraint. So we need it, we need a motion in a second to accept this and put it in a special account.
I'll make the motion to pass Resolution 2016-10.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to establish a Lloyd Fund for our road money. No further discussion, I'll ask for a vote, so all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Rosemary, you got it put up. Okay, is there any old business before the council? None being, we'll go to miscellaneous updates. I just wanted to let know, everybody know that next Saturday is the first farmer's market that starts. And so if you can please attend that, I wish you, you know, get down there. I'll be out of town that day. And I'd like to special thanks for Teresa Combs, Teresa Combs, for spearheading that. I think she's doing a wonderful job on that. And I think, Councilman, would you like to say anything, Diane?
Yes, I would. I would like to recognize a special anniversary in Connersville. The Daughters of Isabella is a Catholic women's organization and they celebrated for this circle, local circle here in town, celebrated their 100th anniversary on May 14th. They were established May 14th, 2016, and they are the oldest, this St. Rita's Circle here in Connersville is the oldest circle in Indiana, the Daughters of Isabella. There are about 85 members and it's, I'm proud to be a member of that. I just wanted to acknowledge that. They have very few 100th anniversaries and it's...
That's awesome.
Congratulations. Yeah.
And Tom, would you like to come up and talk a minute on... Where's your suit coat?
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Tom Creek. I operate the Connerville Transfer Station. And I'm here this evening just to use some information. I had talked to the mayor and he would like for us to have a, what we refer to as Free Friday for the citizens of Connersville. You would be permitted to bring one load of general household waste to the transfer station. We're going to have that June the 10th, on a Friday. There will be a list of, I'll get with the paper and TB3, what you cannot bring, what you cannot bring, destruction waste, refrigerant appliances, shingles, drywall, plaster, no tires. Now, the money, you're going to say, where you get the money, you didn't have it last year. Well, thanks to the previous administration, Mayor Urban negotiated a deal with Lifeline Farms. Mike, were you involved with that?
I've seen...
Do you remember, just, anyway, what he did, Lifeline Farms is just north of town. And what they do, they pay to have all of our tree limbs ground.
Yes, I was, yes.
Okay, they pay to have all of our tree limbs ground. For that, they received 90% of the product, all the city has to do. We do not load with the grinder because then we would be responsible for it. But when the product is ground, we load in their dump trucks and they take it up there. We hold back about 10% for the community. Some folks like to use that. And to give you an idea, when we have it ground, have a grinding company come in, it's $300 an hour. So last year, due to that negotiation, we saved the city over $9,000 and we got rid of the product. So I'm going to use, I'm guessing roughly, it'll probably cost us $3,000. That's what I told you, Mayor.
That's what you told me.
Close to $3,000. But again, thanks to previous administration, that was extremely advantageous to the city of Connersville to have that company come in to the grinding. Do you folks have any questions?
That'll be June 10th?
Yes, June 10th. And like I said, I'll get with TV and with the newspaper to make a list of what we can't do. But if any of your constituents have any questions, this is, this is how we're afforded the opportunity to do this.
What are the hours, Tom?
It will be from, thank you, it will be from April 4:30 on that Friday. And it, just for the residents of the city of Connersville. No one, no one, it happens because your folks are the ones who pay for that.
And you will ask for ID or whatever?
Yeah, well, the one we come up, Diana, that's what we ask for, identification where they live, like, you may, you may have, you may have a pickup truck, your neighbor next door is elderly, and you document it to me, you're taking her, if not, you're allowed, you're allowed one, one general household to load with waste. Anyone else have any questions?
I think it goes without saying that it, even if it's three thousand dollars, it can help beautify the city.
But it's a service that we were, we were afforded the opportunity to provide for the community, and last year, and rightly so, we were in financial crunch, and like I said, do the negotiations and the grinding, it saved us a tremendous amount of money. Some of the folks were upset that we only hold back ten percent, but when that gentleman's paying that much money to have that ground, and it's, it's awesome for the city.
Have you ever turned anybody away from getting a load of mulch?
Well, we've had some folks come up recently, but we don't have any yet, because we haven't had the grinder in.
Okay.
When it comes in, it will be in for like three days, four days, whatever, but as long as you want a small amount, you know, we try to accommodate people.
Okay, I think we told, we stated that, that we would accommodate people if it was-
Yeah, well, the first, the first one, the gentleman had suggested, and the mayor didn't know, that we charge ten dollars a load, which we cannot do. Number one, you don't want to get, collecting sales tax. Number two, when you do that, you're guaranteeing a product. And I tell the folks when they come to get it, and I say, are you going to put this close to your house? Well, yeah. I say, well, it's a smorgasbord for termites, because it hasn't been treated, and the screens are not final screens, there may be bits of debris in it, and if we, we give it to you, it's on you. If I sell you this product and your child steps on it and cuts their foot, then we're liable, right, John?
Right. Okay. No liability involved, right?
But anyway, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good program, and the mayor agreed to it, and I just, I just want to let you folks know.
Thank you. Tom, before you leave, you and I have talked about this in the past, Ruth and I are avid recyclers, we recycle all that we can, and I encourage people to do that, and I go by the list that's on the Channel Three list, and after talking with you, I find out that it's incomplete, that it is much more things can be recycled.
Exactly, what David's talked about, I think it says, it says ones and twos, which is paper and plastic, but it can be, it can be metal, it doesn't have to be separated, it's what they call now one through seven. Now, having said that, like, we accept glass bottles, a pop bottle, for example, is recyclable. Your wife's perfume bottle, it's not, it's contaminated. The little can of oil, the core can, container of oil you have, it has that recycling logo on the bottom of it, it's not recyclable, because the oil contaminated the plastic. But if anyone would like that information, basically-
Also the papers.
I'm sorry?
Also the papers, remember we talked about-
Oh, yeah, David thought all it accepted was, was computer paper, and it's any kind of clean paper, clean paper, it hasn't been wet or hasn't have oil for contamination or whatever. But, you know, if all else fails, just ask me, you know, but it's a friggin' program, thank you for asking.
Yeah, that way, if it's on Channel Three, maybe, or in the newspaper now, maybe more people will recycle more things.
I hope so, I hope so.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you, Tom.
I just wanted to make you aware that I'm one of your elderly neighbors that doesn't have a truck.
Thank you.
See Dave, he just bought a new one.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll go ahead and go to public forum?
I got some of the signees.
Oh, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
You know, I was, I went through the reports, and I found something that was kind of concerning to me. I looked in, and I seen that our overtime budgets are starting to creep up quite a bit, and I'm not pointing fingers at any one, any one department, but I went through it and totaled the police, fire, utilities, EMS, and street, and we're over twenty thousand dollars in overtime. And I'm really concerned that we're this early into the fiscal year, we've got to make those budgets last to December, and I'm really concerned, we're not going to have money to get there. So, I think we just need to make sure we watch those a little, a little closely.
Well, I think the department heads are doing their best to watch it, we talk about it, and I, and I believe they're doing a good job, but we're almost six months into it, and then you have to remember, too, some of the overtime budgets were cut last year from where they were, what we spent, and so they've, they cut them, and I think they're doing a heck of a job to keep it down to where they're at.
I understand that, but, but where we're at is, we're not six months, we're four months, because this is April, and we just put back an extra twenty-five thousand in those, in those overtime budgets. So, even if that were the case, that would only get us to August, we're still four months short. So, we really got to watch that, the general fund is tight, we don't want to get in a position where we have to lay off people or borrow money, we just don't want to go down that road. If we go bankrupt, then everybody loses, so we just need to make sure that we really watch those.
You haven't lifted the spending restraint, by no means.
No, no, they're still, they're still watching it, I think they're doing a good job watching it, and like I said, they're doing the best they can, and I have no, I have complete faith in them, and I think they'll do fine, so. Did you have anything?
No, I just agree with Gabe, I was going to talk about the same thing.
Okay, is there any, any, any out there in public forum now? Thanks for coming, Frank.
Thanks, sir.
Well, if there's no one in public forum, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.